I'd like to call the March sixth, twenty twenty four Planning and Planning Commission Meeting to Order.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, considered republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners Murray and Turner, both are excused. Charlene?
Here.
Jenny Smith-Vick-Ailey?
Here.
Thomas Anderson?
Here.
Mark Burton?
Here.
Caitlin Babla?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Any objections to approving the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved for our last meeting on February seventh. Are there any changes to the minutes? Any objections to approving the minutes? Not hearing, seeing none, the minutes are approved. For public hearings, we've got Resolution PZ twenty twenty-three dash zero twenty-five recommending that Section seventeen point ten point one three oh definitions and seventeen point ten point three three five landscaping be amended to clarify and provide consistency with the standards in the Saldana Municipal Code. May I have a second? May I have a?
It's already, it's already been moved.
Oh, it's already been moved?
Yeah, that was from.
Oh, okay.
Way back when.
So do we just need to? Okay.
So we just need a staff report.
Okay. May we have the staff report?
Absolutely. So I guess it was December of twenty-three when we met and you consider revisions to the landscape requirements. And we had pointed out at that time an inconsistency between the landscape code fence requirements and the commercial zoning district fence requirements. And in particular, there are two things that stood out. In the commercial district, we call the fence a decorative fence. And it can't be more than eight feet in height. And landscaping code, we call it a ornamental fence, and it can't be more than six feet in height. And so we wanted to bring those two together and provide some consistency. In addition, you had some questions about definitions and what do we, you know, what do we call a decorative or ornamental fence? And so Jen and I found some different examples and put together the definition that is in the resolution. So what you see then before you is a resolution that uses the term decorative instead of ornamental throughout the code. It standardized the height requirement to eight feet. It adopts a definition of decorative fencing. It identifies where barbed wire can and can't be used and who can approve it. And lastly, it requires, it removes the requirement that fences may not be used along streets. And that is the end of the staff report.
Great. Thank you for cleaning up the code. All right, the public hearing is now open. There are no members in the public here, so the public hearing is now closed. Are there any Commissioner comments or questions for staff? So I think last, as I recall, it was three, four months ago that there was an incidence where someone wanted to put barbed wire on top of a fence by, for their storage facility, and it was located next to Karen Park, and that was commercial, in our commercial district, right? And so it sparked a conversation about, do we want barbed wire in the city? To what extent is it actually making our residents safer? Does it? Where is it appropriate? Where is it not appropriate? Is there issues of harmony? You know, there's a standard about harmony with surrounding neighborhoods. So I think what I would like to see the update for the last part of what you just said in your staff report, John, where, where barbed wire is allowed and who who may approve its use. Yeah, thank you.
Sure. So in the definition for decorative fence, it states that all fence, or I'm sorry, that fences shall not contain barbed wire or razor wire. Period. And then, "In the case where the security of institutional, industrial, or commercial property is necessary, the Planning Commission or administrative officer may approve a decorative fence, eight feet in height with barbed wire attached to the top of the fence as part of the conditional use permit or site plan review process." So there are some places in our code where things like a storage yard require your approval. For example, in the commercial district. So in that scenario, you would be approving, if somebody wanted to do barbed wire fence, you would be making that approval. Whereas a, the same type of use in the industrial district doesn't require a conditional use permit. It requires an administrative permit. And in that case, we would, Jen or I would be making that decision whether a barbed wire fence would be appropriate.
Does the building inspector ever get involved?
Yes, if it's a fence over seven feet in height, the, the building inspector does get involved.
But that, that person, the building inspector is not the final, is not allowing or disallowing. No?
Okay.
Is, would that ever be? It's tricky because it's like a structure, but it's not the building. Because the building inspector does allow or disallow other structure, structural components of.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So would it? Would, I guess I'm, what I'm, what I'm wondering about is whether or not. Because I, I don't think that there are a lot of, there's not a lot of barbed wire. But because our commercial district is sort of all over the place and because there are properties and next to neighborhoods and properties in a downtown area, and even like properties next to the highway that are, that some of them, they can just put up barbed wire if it's, only if it's in the industrial district, right, without a, without a permit.
I'd have to, no, they would still require a permit.
But, but they wouldn't have to come.
To the commission.
Okay, and they.
If it's a, right, if it's administer, if it's a principally permitted use.
Right.
Where we typically write administrative permits, then it would be our responsibility and, and where it's conditional use, it's your responsibility.
So in all commercial, in all of the commercially zoned areas in our city, it would have to come before the commission. And then all of the indust, excuse me, industrial areas of the city, it would, it would be an administrative permit. Okay.
And institutional, I'd have to, I don't, perhaps, I, I don't recall off the top of my head. In institutional districts, I don't believe, for example, that storage yards are even allowed in institutional districts, but there may be other uses that are allowed that would want a barbed wire fence. So for example, Jen looked at different, where, where were you seeing fencing in the city? And there were a number, number of institutional uses like a police department or a school or, remind me, what else?
Right, are, all are wellhouses.
Our wellhouses, thank you.
The airport.
Mm-hmm. Airport building, yep.
Yeah, River Sealy Marine has.
And what about the emergency?
CES has it too, yeah, that's adjacent to residential.
Uh-huh. But like a, a residence can't put barbed wire on their, on top of their fence.
They, they could.
Oh, really?
We don't have any restrictions on.
But doesn't it say fences shall not contain barbed wire or razor wire?
This, this applies to decorative fences that would be used as part of, for, for any of these uses under the code that would fall under the landscaping code. But for example, a fence that you put up in your own yard doesn't require any permitting for, under our landscape code.
Why?
If it's over seven feet tall, it does require a permit, and the building official does, but otherwise it does not.
So even this verbiage that we're working on right now, a commercial property could apply barbed wire as long as it's not on the side that's required, like the buffer fence that's decorative?
Correct, yes. The way it's worded right now is barbed wire fence wouldn't be allowed unless you authorized a permit. So if it was a matter of security for their goods and services, whatever, then you can, you can provide that approval.
But that's not exactly what Jenny asked.
No. What were you asking?
So this, is this referring only to decorative fences?
Yeah.
I thought it was all fencing in, all fences in the commercial district, but your.
No, this is correct. So this is, if somebody, for example, our code allows currently that if you want to use decorative fencing as a way to buffer or as a portion of your buffer, you can do that. So right now, if you're next to a residential district and you've got that storage facility, you would be required to have a fifteen-foot landscape buffer, two rows of trees. Our code says you can eliminate five feet of that by putting up a decorative fence and, and only have one row of trees. And so this defines then what a decorative fence is and what it can and can't, you know, contain.
So this is just a pretty small percentage of the fences in town. It's just when they eliminate some landscaping and put up a fence instead.
That's correct.
Yeah, I think, I think what the conversation for me last time sparked was, if I remember correctly, was this sort of desire to have alternatives to barbed wire that were safe, safer, but more aesthetically appealing. And then also like, yeah, barbed wire, there, yeah, there are some horror stories of kids like getting decapitated and like barbed wire. Barbed wire, I think it was also because it was next to a park. They were just like, oh, man, does it actually make the kids safer or not? So I, I guess I would, I would like, I think it makes sense for there to be some instances, like for the institutional, for there to be an administrative permit and then for commercial, all commercial properties for there to be a, for it to come before the, this body. But I would like for that to be for every single time that someone wants to put barbed wire on top of a, any fence, not just the decorative one.
That would be a, a different code amendment. That would be something else that we would have to work on and, but it wouldn't be under this amendment. This, this was specifically brought forward because of this, this issue of where we've got two pieces of code conflicting with it, with each other. One saying you can have a six foot and the other one saying you can have an eight-foot decorative fence. One calling it ornamental, one calling it decorative. So we wanted to clear that up. That's the main reason that we brought this forward, so it would be consistent when these, when these applications do come in and we have to consider them. But trying to set up a, a system of, or a new ordinance for regulating barbed wire in general would be a different ordinance that would have to be brought forward. That wasn't the intent of, of our bringing, of us bringing this forward. It wasn't to try to provide regulations for, for barbed wire fences across the city. It was just to clear up this issue in our, in our, in our code.
Okay.
In reference to the verb, verbiage change here, the second to last line on the main paragraph there, yeah. "In the case where the security of institutional, industrial, or commercial property is necessary, the Planning Commission or administrative officer may approve a decorative fence height, eight feet in height with barbed wire." It doesn't say that it's either us or you in any certain instances. It's just institutional, industrial, or commercial. Any of those three could be planning commission or administrative office.
Except that.
Right? Is that, am I reading that wrong?
The, the issue is if one of those, in, in one of those districts, if it requires a conditional use permit, it's coming before you. We can't authorize it. We can't. So it's okay if it says or because we don't have any authority to approve a barbed wire fence if it's a conditional use permit. That's solely your authority.
And all landscaping fences in commercial properties require a conditional use permit?
No, different uses require conditional use permits within the, the commercial district. So for example, if somebody wants to put a restaurant up, doesn't require a conditional use permit. Someone wants to, you know, most of retail uses don't require a conditional use permit.
Yeah, but I think that's your question, right, is like, when?
Well, it's just, yeah.
When does it, when does it?
I mean, that's what I was going to get to next, was that. But initially, I'm just, the way I'm reading it is it's like the Planning Commission or the Administrative Office may approve that either one of those people, those bodies can approve a decorative fence, eight feet in height with barbed wire attached at the top of the fence, such fence as part of the conditional use permit. Or now I just, or, or site plan review process. I just, I don't know, I guess it doesn't read right to me where, I mean, the way it reads to me is that either or can approve, may approve, a decorative fence, eight feet in height with barbed. It's not like the Planning Commission has institutional and commercial and administrative office has industrial. You know what I'm getting at? Like, it's, it's really just a giant or, like, any of these institutional, industrial, or commercial may be approved by Planning Commission or Administrative Office. And then as part of the conditional use permit. So I guess we would, I guess the conditional use, we would, we would have to approve the conditional use. But it says here that Administrative Office may approve a decorative fence.
That, that's correct. So it just depends on the application that comes in, if somebody wants to do it. And if the application comes in and it requires only an administrative permit, then Jen and I can approve it. If it requires a conditional use permit, then.
It would default.
It would default to you guys. We don't have, yeah, we don't have the ability to, to approve.
Okay, yeah, I guess I was just reading it through one lens, so.
Gotcha.
And it does, it is helpful to, I think, look at that. So when it would, when John or Jen or, you know, the staff would approve it, when it would be an administrative permit, it's those, those top.
Those top. No, it's okay. There's a lot, it's, there's a lot that falls under administrative approval. Um, we would only get to have a say in barbed wire landscape fence. For like boat moorings and.
No.
Or no, no?
It would only be when landscape buffering is triggered.
Oh, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't know how many, um, how many. Uh, of these. Do, do you know off the top of your head, John or Jen, how many? Barbed wire, let landscaping fence, um, permits came across your desk last year? Like one, is it the one?
Or administrative permits, uh, zero that I recall.
And there was just that one for us.
For, for conditional use permits, I recall, you know, us talking about this. And having to deal with this conflict of six feet versus eight feet more than barbed wire fence, honestly, it was been the height. You know, it's been the height that's been the issue. Um, as far as the conflict goes, the, the, calling it a decorative ornamental, we should standardize that.
Yeah.
Barbed wire. The only one I can think of as being an issue was the one that, that you guys processed, which was for the, on Karen Street.
And that was, obviously it was a conditional use.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it could be that we, um, if there's so few, we just, um, have them all come before. The planning commission, just so that we have a say in whether or not we want it and, um, whether or not it's in harmony with the surrounding area. So that, that could be an amendment that we make tonight. Um, it's just to have it all come before the planning commission. And that's just for, that's just for. Uh, barbed wire, um, and as a decorative fence, that's not. I, I, I do think that, uh, I don't know if it's the next meeting or the following meeting, but. Making us, making a small change that. There are, there, I think there are safer, better looking alternatives to barbed wire that. We could, we could just say that, you know, no barbed wire. If you need a safety or security, use this instead. Or, or all, all barbed wire fences need to go through the planning commission. I would, I would love to see that. I don't, I don't, that seems to me what our, what our, what we wrestled with, that was more the heart of what we wrestled with the last time. Okay, yeah.
What is the requirement for all fences in all zones right now? Like, is there just a one? Fences in residential zones, is this definition, but fences in industrial zones is this? Not whether or not it's decorative or not, but just, is there a, a fence? Like, if we were back up even further, is it just a general fence? Permit, yeah, or any kind of, does it address a fence that we're, we allow in our city?
So any fence in the city over seven feet in height requires a building permit.
Okay, anything under, they can do literally whatever they want. And that's all zones?
All zones.
Would it be possible to do something like, um, barbed wire fences? Can only be, barbed wire can only be installed on fences seven feet or over? Just because otherwise it's like, yeah, just put it down at five feet and then throw barbed wire on it, otherwise we have to get a permit. You know? Cause it tells me.
I, I would.
Someone had an eight foot fence, you're rarely gonna need.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. I, I, I would have to check with our building official and see what the, the building code standards are for fences. And if there was an opportunity to modify that, then yeah.
Or that if they wanted it to be, if they wanted a security fence that was shorter than that, there are other options besides barbed wire, like the kind to go up and point. Out, we look things that they're basically deterrent as well. Can't really climb up it. I mean, you could get a twelve foot ladder, I guess. Yeah, you can get that from. I don't know, give people an alternative to choose something more attractive without a permit or they have that a permit if they want.
And so right now, I mean, they can do that. I mean, there's, there's opportunity to do an alternative to, to that, and you have the opportunity to not approve barbed wire. You can say, yeah, have you considered the type of fence you talked about and.
Well, that's why we would want it to come to. Come as a conditional use permit, cause that gives you the opportunity to. Veto it or offer alternatives.
Right, uh. That, that, well, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm, what you're saying, but that, that's how this is written, so that it would come to you.
As long as it falls under decorative fence.
Correct. But are you saying for all fences, Jenny?
I think that's what.
Okay. Gotcha. Yeah, then again, yeah, we would, we'd have to come back with a, another set of code amendments and. And take a look at that.
If I'm understanding this right, the one over at Karen Street. If they did, and if they had said, yes, we'll give out fifteen feet for our buffer. Then their next fence would have just been their fence. It wouldn't have been a decorative fence and it could just be a six foot with barbed wire, old barbed wire.
Correct.
Right behind those trees, you know, so the trees are the buffer and then they can have a six foot fence. So if we're fine with that, then this works. If we want to restrict. The barbed wire issue, then we, then I think we have to take it further somewhere else.
Yeah.
I, I think that's. What we didn't understand that this wasn't covering.
Gotcha, okay.
And then just to clarify this amendment, which is a, a really, I, yeah, I love the cleanup of. The height discrepancy and the language discrepancy. I just wanna clarify that. Um, there are still instances for even just a small section of like eight foot fencing. Um, that's a decorative buffer. We will still only see. Um, applications that require a conditional use permit. Because some. Oh, gosh, parking lots, multifamily housing, commercial industrial uses. Sorry, so those are. I was just kind of curious, uh, curious, like, when will, when will we see the conditional, when will this come across our desk and when will it not?
Yeah, Jen just had that up there.
Sorry, I'm trying to zoom in.
Thank you.
This does not love.
No, it's great.
So I believe there's four different types of uses where it's required. There it is, uh, parking lots, multifamily, four units or more. Commercial or industrial uses and all outdoor storage facilities.
So that's when we'll see it.
Correct.
And when will we not see it?
Any other time that. Doesn't require to come to the. The commission, so.
Like a restaurant, you said, or like, uh, no, commercial and industrial uses, that would be a commercially used, right?
Adjacent.
Oh, adjacent, so if it, if there was a restaurant that wasn't next to a residential area, you guys could just approve it or not approve it.
Correct, but if it was next to the residential area, then.
Then we would.
You would, you would see it, yep.
Is it, and because literally we saw one of these this last year. So I guess my, my wonder is whether or not we should just have all of them come before the planning commission at this point. Instead of allowing any administrative permits. Not that you go, not, I don't mean to have that sound like a. But, but if we are concerned about. Barbed wire and wanna encourage. Other, um, forms of safety, security fencing, then. That could be a way to do it. Is that, that be terrible? Is that a terrible idea for staff or?
My opinion is, uh, that. I, I would not personally recommend having a part of the permit be administrative. Decided administratively and then another portion of it decided by the commission.
Oh, I see. So it, there's like a larger.
We're reviewing, yeah, the, the entire application against our codes and. If one part of it has to come to you, it also would, well, it, it makes things more complicated and it, it also slows the process down as well.
Yeah, and then I guess, then, then perhaps the way that we as a commission. If, when I'm here, I don't think, I, I feel like I'm actually hearing this from other commissioners, not just myself, that. We, we wanted to move away from barbed wire to other more aesthetically pleasing, um, options.
I don't know how we can.
Yeah, so, so it sounds like maybe in a few months or in a few meetings, we could look at. Fencing across the board in the city of Sodatna and how we, we encourage other things besides barbed wire. Basically, that's the way to do it and.
Yes.
The way it is.
I think so, and, and I think what we could do too is, um. Depending on, we'll have a conversation with our building official and depending on what he says, we may wanna invite him. What I don't know is what's involved in modifying. The building code, I don't know. I, I haven't been involved in that. And so that would be a, a learning experience for myself and, and for the commission as well.
What, what do you recommend? Would that be a, a work session or a?
Uh, I think we need to first just talk to our building official and find out the basics. It may not be necessary to have him come in. He, he might just say that. No, here's how you change the, the building code. It's same as you change the zoning code. And in that case, then, um, we would, I think certainly want his involvement and, and. Uh, his opinion on it for sure. Cause he's, he'd be the one that would be writing the, the permits for it. Unless that's modified as well.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I don't.
So, yeah, maybe a work session is the right thing at some point.
Okay.
So would it be like, uh, a recommendation from planning and zoning commission to city council that, for example. Residential zones, we do not accept any barbed wire at any time for any reason.
You could make that recommendation, sure.
Is that kind of what you're thinking, like a sweeping change like that? Opposed to a very specific decorative fence verbiage change?
Yeah, and I think that that is, I understand that it's a code cleanup that we're doing right now and then. But I, I think even across the board for any. Any, any place, any, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial, there are better options. They're better looking, they're safer options rather than barbed wire, so.
But I think even if we, even if we have someone come for a conditional use permit. And we say, we think there's better options, wouldn't this look so much nicer? They could be like, yeah, I think that you might be right, but. Like, we, we would have to have some reason for denying them. So really all it would be was just a chance to suggest something different unless we.
And aesthetics is a.
We did make something more sweeping like in Sodatna. We do not allow for a permit, whatever the right word is for, um, barbed wire unless, and then. You know, it's like an ex, an extra permit, someone would have to get on top of, or they could use our alternative.
It's a legitimate exercise of your authority to require something different. Yeah, so, so for example, barbed wire versus something more decorative, I, you know, I don't know what it, what it is, but. If it's in keeping with the character of the neighborhood that it's in, then that, that's your finding, that, you know, barbed wire isn't. And this form of fence is, and, and so that's your, your finding and that's why you'd be able to. It has, it has to have a legitimate reason behind it, but, but you have that ability to make that, that call.
Yeah, I think we just, nothing's a big deal until it's a big deal, and when all of a sudden you're living next to a correctional facility inside of a neighborhood.
Even with the, um, with the fire station, there was a little bit of that, the neighborhood people being like, it's gonna be lit up and like, you know. Like, I don't think they're gonna put barbed wire up there, but they, I guess they could, right? It's industrial and.
They have it on one side already.
Yeah, it's, it's at CES, so they could just continue it.
Cause yeah, when you're in a neighborhood, it's just not the most, the only thing, but sometimes it's, I understand for security reasons, but.
It's unsightly.
Well, I'm, I wanna keep, keep this item moving and then, um. But I, I am hearing that we would like a, um, perhaps a work session with the building inspector. And perhaps, um, have it be known that this, this body or multiple commissioners on this body. Really want to update the fencing code across the board to. To encourage other types of fence or to disallow barbed wire and.
Maybe adopt a recommended style.
Yeah. Yeah, there's.
And then if they think it's still necessary to have barbed wire, then they can.
Apply for a conditional use, yeah. That's what I'd like to see. And I don't know when that can happen, if that's something that can happen in a couple of months or within a couple of months or. Okay, sounds great. Um, is there any other, um, conversations we had on this particular update, which is a good cleanup? But for a very particular and small subset of fencing. No, okay. All right, uh, there are no other commissioner comments or questions for staff, then let's call for the vote.
All right. Jenny Smith, with Ailey.
Yes.
Thomas Anderson.
Yes.
Mark Burton.
Yes.
Charlene Topfes.
Yes.
And Sherabadla.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Um, we have no new business, um, no public here to comment without prior notice. A couple of informational items, though, we have twenty twenty-three year in review. Can we have the staff report, please?
Sure, thank you. So every year we come to you with our, uh, annual report and, um. This year, as you can see, looking through it, was exceptionally busy for you and for us. The number of actions that were taken in twenty, uh, this last year were almost double what you had the previous year. We also had a number of different work sessions, uh, throughout the year on the river redevelopment plan and also on the, um, zoning standards for the commercial core. Um, and then following that are the lists of all the different, uh, actions that you took, the different plaits, the conditional use permits. The map amendments, uh, and so on. I won't go into any detail on any of those. But certainly if you do have questions, let me know or let Jen know. The. The next page, I think, Jen, is the, uh, staff permits issued. So these are the administrative permits, and if you go down to the bottom there too, you see that our, our workload, uh, increased fairly. Substantially in, last year and, uh, the, uh, an important piece is, is another line below. There we go. We had a huge amount of complaints that we responded to, or mostly Jen responded to, um, last year. And some of them are resolved, you know, easily with a phone call, some of them require multiple visits, some of them require working with our attorney. And multiple letters, um, so it, it varies, but, uh, needless to say, it was a, a very, uh, busy year. And then last are just a number of different activities that the, um. Uh, the department have been involved in throughout the year. So I'll stop there and see if you have any questions.
Or is the, I knew, I saw that there were like ten more short term rental permits, but what else was the adding to the ninety-five number? Twenty-three, yeah, yeah, so up ten. The others were, yeah, the others were kind of, kind of similar.
Right.
So that's, yeah, that's a lot of work. I do have one question, uh, and partly because of our previous discussion. In the big picture. Do you think that? The split or the balance, balance between. Um, what's an administrative permit and what comes before the commission is, is still balanced or still the way that it, it should, should be? Should we see more short term rental per, I mean, in some ways it's more work for you when we, when it comes to.
Yeah, I think that's, um, you know, policy decision of, of the commission and of the council, um, whether they want. Or you want that level of review for short term rentals. We're certainly capable of administering them are, I guess, one of the things to look at is the, the set of standards and they're, they're fairly basic. That, and it doesn't take much to administer a, a short term rental permit, generally speaking. You know, occasionally we have to find out who your local point of contact is, make sure they've got all the parts and pieces, but. Generally, uh, I don't know that it would save us any work because we still have to prepare for you, all the materials. And then some to.
Yeah.
To make it work. So I, I, I wouldn't say it would be a savings on our end.
Yeah, I guess that is a good point, too, for short term rentals. It's one of those things that. Um, it's one of those things that people talk about a lot, and I'm curious. Uh, the reality in Soldatna for, you know, there are twenty-three. More this past year and ten more last year, you know, it's in in our city. And that's twenty-three fewer houses available for residents to rent. Um, or it's new new construction that is newly available. And and I'm not sure. That is one area where it might be valuable for the commission, for this for this commission to see. And to better understand where. Where short-term rentals are going and and if it's appropriate for the neighborhood, basically.
The very next agenda item, Jen has a a uh, a very nice report on short-term rentals that goes into detail as we've seen over the last year. Yep.
Question if I may to the chair, um, just pertaining to the staff here and report.
Mm hmm.
Um, uh, on one of these items here, it mentions that you entered a a contract with Harmari to provide one year of data collection on S T Rs in the city. Um, my understanding was I thought that the borough had previously, I don't know if it was with Harmari, but the borough was collecting data on this borough wide. And that we are going to be able to get access to that data for the city without having to necessarily contract it ourselves. Did that change?
Um. Sure.
Okay, so.
Might be able to.
Jordan, you're exactly right. The borough did contract with the exact same company that we did. And so for two years, John and I went back and forth with your sales tax division. And we were able to get some data, but they, I think the borough also is having a hard time managing all the data that Harmari has given them. And part of that is is that Harmari doesn't necessarily give you the exact addresses, even though it's close sometimes, there's still a lot of field work to do. So what John and I have done is sometimes we're like, we look at things and it's like, oh, that's, we look at the exact listing, it's like, oh, that's a hall quality home. Oh, that was probably built in twenty twenty, oh, you know, and we're we're really sifting through things. And so we're able to pinpoint the exact home by looking at roof lines and our, you know, the borough assessment data, but Harmari is not doing that. So they do give us a lot of data, but it still requires an intense amount of workload for us, and we're only seven and a half square. Miles versus what the borough has to do, I can't even imagine. So I think the borough's workload with Harmari dot data far exceeded their expectations.
Got it. Thank you for that clarification.
May I? Sorry. A lot of exciting, you guys have done so much work um in twenty twenty-three. Can I just ask for a tiny update about the wayfinding?
Um, we are on paused on the wayfinding. And um, we are anticipating that we are going to have some conversations with the D O T. In general about um. The Sterling Highway and access in the riverfront redevelopment plan and potentially if if their most recent. Um, meetings on complete streets was a success, we might have continued discussions there. So the thought process was to wrap. The wayfinding discussion into these other discussions, uh, and the good news is, uh, Capehead has has offered to help coordinate. That meeting with the O T, and so uh, we will. Follow up with them and my my. Intent or recommendation would be um. We hope that the uh council will approve a riverfront project manager. And when that person comes on board, we would want that person to be part of this this project or this discussion, and that's when that would take place.
Thanks.
Is the storefront improvement program, is that going to continue in twenty-four?
Uh, yes, it it should continue. Uh, council funds that program every year. It's a capital improvement project and um. Usually it's funded for at least two projects, sometimes three. It depends on on the given year. Some years we go through the process and don't award all the grant funds, and other years we tap it. And so if we tap it, we ask the council for enough for three. If we still have leftover funds, we ask for enough money for two projects. But it, uh, our intent is that it would continue.
Good, yeah, that's a good one. Thank you. And then um, safe streets and roads for all. Is there any parts of the city that are already focusing focusing on to use that or to improve or? Have we, how did we do with it last year? Is it continuing next year?
So the the Safe Streets For All is actually a uh grant that we are um. Riding on the coattails of the borough along with all the other municipalities in the borough. Um, the borough applied for this grant, it's a planning grant, to um essentially put ourselves in a position. To potentially receive infrastructure funds down the road. You have to have this the plan in place first. And so the borough applied for and received the uh million-dollar grant to plan for safe roads. Uh, across the the peninsula, and once that plan is adopted. The borough and each municipality will become eligible for this other pot of money, which will allow us to construct. But at this point, we don't have any priorities. We have to get the plan completed and and get it that uh, we have to get that completed first.
Is is twenty twenty-four the the date or the goal for that, or is that out further than that?
No, I believe, I I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I believe it was approximately one year, and it did begin in twenty-three. So hopefully by the end of this year, it will be complete.
And that plan, does it like outline which streets or walkways we're going to improve? Is that, we're not focusing on where we're gonna? How the plan would work, it's, what what's the plan like?
It's more of a identifying what we're trying to accomplish with our roads and streets and the different levels of of transportation that we have. Um, so if, you know, we're talking about neighborhood streets versus collector versus uh state highways, they're all going to have different goals and standards and and how we can accomplish making them safe. So it'll it'll provide recommendations in a general sense, but then when funds become available. We'll have an opportunity to identify, for example, problem areas where we've had a fair amount of, you know, pedestrian or bicycle incidents, accidents. And then um. Apply for funds to improve those roadways to the the standards that are outlined in the plan.
And would would this be something we could join up with the downtown um riverfront redevelopment plan?
Absolutely.
Hand in hand, like when we do that, use some of those funds for that and help subsidize some of the costs?
Hope so, yeah. That's exactly, yeah, what we we hope to, yeah. Tap, tap whatever funds we.
Yeah, that'd be sweet. That's a good idea. Yep. Thanks, John.
Are there any other commissioner comments or questions for staff? Um, before we move on to the short-term rental report?
Um, just one more congratulations to Jennifer Hester, who passed her A I C P exam.
Yeah, awesome. Good work. It's a lot of work for two people. It's pretty impressive. Yeah. And consequential, you know, I feel like you guys, a lot of the decisions, even before this body too, are, you know, they're going to be, they're things that are going to be here for the next eighty years or so. All right, let's. Onto the short-term rental report. May, and here we have the staff report, please.
Yeah. So in light of exactly what you're talking about, Caitlin, previously is that we had the same questions of. We're seeing our housing stock, you know, the prices of a a median home in Soldatna are the most expensive of the area. And we had that same kind of question of what is the impact of short-term rentals? Um, so in twenty twenty, staff um started to do an administrative permit for short-term rentals. So previously it had been a B and B rental. If you wanted to do something similar to short-term rental in the residentially zoned areas. You had to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission and apply for a B and B permit of sorts, and there were restrictions on that. So this was to kind of ease that and to create a a level playing field of of the the housing stock and and for that. Um, and so since twenty twenty is when we started kind of, you know, keeping track of all of this, we have issued forty-nine short-term rental permits. Some of the short-term rentals are not, no permit required, and that is in instances where the short-term rental is in the commercial district. For example, we have, or the limited commercial district, so the house is on the other side of the river right here. This is limited commercial. So there's a couple of short-term rentals here along the Sterling Highway. There's a few, you know, on top of SIAM Noodles actually has a short-term rental and. And Matt Pahala in his chiropractor business has a short-term rental. So there's a couple scattered out, and they don't require a permit. And then there's also ones that don't require a permit in the residential zone, and those are people who are staying at their home and just. You know, maybe they're renting out a room or part of their basement, something like that, and we call those owner occupied. We kept track of everything, though. I mean, as I combed through the data, so I can kind of give you an example of my process, it's it's time consuming. For both John and I to go through these. What we did was we looked at Airbnb. So we would start with Airbnb and just take a look at the map of the city, and we'd click on one, and we'd try and figure out the exact address. So as you're looking through this, obviously, it might have an, might have a number that we can see, and so this is pretty easy. If it's like one, six, eight, and we know about the street, we can figure out what house it is within maybe twenty minutes. But some of them, we can't figure out the house easily. We can't figure out the name of the owner, and so it does require some of them have required hours and hours to identify one listing. And that also speaks to Jordan's point of the borough, you know, they have this data for the entire borough, and Harmari had a hard time even discerning our boundaries. So even though we gave them the shape file of our our city boundaries, the data that they gave us, we had probably twenty that were outside of city limits. So it still requires a lot of combing through, um, and they weren't able to give us a G I S shape later, for whatever reason. It was just an Excel spreadsheet. They couldn't figure out how to give us a shape file. So that's to kind of give you a background of, we would go through incrementally every single short-term rental on Zoom, on Airbnb or V R B O and identify them. And then from there, we honed in on what district are they in? And so we put them on a map, and that's how we came about this. And what we saw is that there are far more short-term rentals than what you would expect, the single-family, two-family, rural residential. There's even a couple in the single family, in the multifamily. And we also kind of looked at trends year after year. So granted, we really only started honing in the last two years. And what we're seeing is there's quite a bit more of non-owner occupied, so probably there's people with second homes. But then there's also some that people are living in their RV for a couple of months of the summer to to make a buck. We did have a couple listings that fell off so that we're active in twenty twenty-two, and then the owners contacted us and said, you know, this wasn't as profitable as we were expecting it to. We're going to switch over to either a long-term renter or whatever. So we're also seeing maybe the market kind of balanced out a little bit. However, there are still pretty huge gains both across the commercial sector and the residential sector of the number of short-term rentals we're seeing in in the city as a whole. Um, and then this compliance is really because of hours that we've put in. So not only did we identify where things were at, we sent individual letters to every single one of these property owners. Letting them know our standards and letting them know if we believed a permit was required. In some cases, we didn't know if they were owner occupied or non non-owner occupied. We got the feedback and then we issued the permit. So each one of these, to get this permit, required typically at least one letter, sometimes three. And then, you know, then processing the permit and writing it. And I think that's the synopsis. Is there anything else you wanted to add, John? Okay.
Yeah.
Well, if I may, uh, to the chair, um, question on the permitting process that goes with this, I'm not sure if you have this data on hand, but if not, um. One idea I would put forward for um, your permitting process is um. Data collection on prior use for the short-term rentals. So when they go to fill out their permit. Uh, maybe have a required question where they have to disclose what the most recent use of that unit was. Was it primary residence? Was it a long-term rental? Was it unoccupied? Um, that would be incredibly useful data for us to have as a city to figure out what what the trending uses for these homes.
Mm hmm. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Is there a cap on how many can be issued?
No.
So everybody in town could have one.
There, there are other areas of the country that have a cap on number of short-term rentals or simply disallow them. I think that's more. More likely the avenue for a municipality to to govern is just, it's easier to say it's not allowed at all versus it's allowed for this person, but two doors down. It's not allowed. And so, for example, if you tried to book a Airbnb in Hawaii, there's quite a few sections of Hawaii that would not allow. Anything on Airbnb or V R B O to be listed, and that's because of, you know, rent control and trying to make it affordable for their their workers and the people who live in the state.
So we could apply that to our residential area and only allow short-term rentals and commercial. If, I'm not saying that that's what we want to do, but we could.
Potentially. But I also see, I mean, if you had family coming in town and they're doing the fishing and they're doing the mountain biking, they want a washer and dryer. And we only have what McDonald's open after eleven P M, and so they get off the river at eleven thirty and they need a food, and maybe they want to cook at home. So it is nice to have the short-term rental, too. I think there's, there's a balance to be said.
Yeah. Yeah, I I think it's, I don't, I I don't think that it would make sense to totally disallow it. We're not, we're not Maui yet. But, yeah, I guess, yeah, the question is like, everyone could have these and and I, and anecdotally, um. The other, there's other pressures at play for housing prices doubling in the last couple of years here. Rental prices are getting more expensive, so for our residents, at what point? When is is this particular stressor for housing? Adding just too much for people who who want to, who need to rent? And I think, and and maybe, yeah, I'll I'll save it for my comment later, um, at the end about work session topics. Yeah, this is a, it's wonderful to have this not, this data, thank you, these these data. Well, it would.
Be interesting when this comes into play. How many, when the riverfront redevelopment plan comes into play, um, how many short-term rentals will be in town?
Yeah. Yeah, because I could imagine, especially with townhomes, like. People who have money buying them and turning them all into short-term rentals, you know, or whatever, like that's. Financially, that's. The easiest, least resistance path that would happen, and then and then you're like, oh, great, we have all this new housing. Oh, but not actually.
I think the fieldhouse also give us a bump through the winter.
Yeah.
By bringing Anchorage and Palmer and.
Yeah.
Homer and everybody here for hockey and wrestling and all different.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, are there any other comments or questions for staff regarding the short-term rental report? Okay, um, moving on to mayor and council reports. Uh, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and just give a brief report on some of the recent ongoings with the city council uh in the last month. So uh, starting with our February fourteenth meeting, uh, we did pass ordinance twenty twenty-four zero zero four. This was the rezone of the Hillcrest subdivision, uh, lots that was recommended by this commission. Um, so that is now done. Uh, additionally, we did approve the adoption of our finalized riverfront redevelopment plan. So again, thank you to everyone here that worked into that. That was a very long-running project, and I think we have a lot more to go with it. And it's very exciting to see what happens with our city with further uh, adoption of that plan. On our February twenty-eighth meeting, this is last week, uh, we uh, passed ordinance twenty twenty-four zero zero five, where we accepted a four hundred fifty thousand dollar grant from Rasmussen Foundation. Which we'll be putting towards construction of the fieldhouse, so that's very exciting, and I believe we still have some additional grant opportunity uh through the Fed. With that money kind of up in the air right now, but uh, hopefully that will be coming in. Uh, a lot of the discussion during that last meeting was focused on sewer extension for the Whistle Hill Special Assessment District. Uh, I think that was something that's been discussed prior at P and Z, but basically the history of that is, uh, right now sewer facilities only go up to the map shop. And the uh, owner of the uh property of their, all the businesses are, has been very interested in extending that sewer service to their to their lot due to inadequate uh onsite sewer uh. Facilities that they have, and it's been a continual problem for them. So they had approached the city some, a couple of years back and uh, were interested in developing a special assessment district. To cover the cost of expanding those services up there. Um, with the special assessment district model. The city fronts all the cost of that, and then we typically will get reimbursed through a levy on the property taxes there up to a certain amount. And in the end, basically, when everything is settled, we'll have paid for a certain percentage of it, and then the property owners in the area have paid for the rest. So in in October twenty twenty-two, uh, we appropriated eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for that sewer extension. And again, this is just a quarter mile. It's very, very expensive. Um, but we had agreed that we would cover sixty-two and a half percent of that project. So when the dust settled and all the reimbursements were done at the end of that lifespan of the S A D, we would have been paying for about five hundred and eight thousand dollars for that project. So that was in twenty twenty-two. Uh, and May twenty twenty-three, um, we did get one bid back on that and the the costs that we were given. And the, the cost that we were given was 1.1 million. So it was significantly more expensive. And at that point in time, code required that come back to the council for decision on what we were going to do with that, because it was well over the 10% increase that they were allowed to move forward with on that. And we went through a number of options on how to handle this at our last Wednesday meeting. One of the initial proposals that was put forward was to convert it away from a special assessment district to just a simple development agreement with the property owners. And in that model, we don't front the entire project cost. We really just convey over a certain amount of funding to support the project and then they cover everything else. And really, there's just a lot of debate about what that level of assistance should be. Because again, we'd previously committed to 62 and a half percent, but that was when it was significantly less. And then additional complicating factors that were presented to council were the cost of some substantially large capital projects we have that affect the utility fund. So we recently had our outflow collapse and that's almost a million dollar project to repair. And then additionally, that I believe we have some improvements at the John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember what it was. I felt it was a, one of pump facilities. It was about a $2 million project they were talking about doing. It was filtration. Okay, so we're talking about maybe $3 million in capital projects coming up out of that fund. And we have, I believe, $1.8 million in the fund. And we're talking about supporting a $1.1 million project locally that affects a small group of businesses. So what number do we feel comfortable with as a counselor? A lot of debate about that. Anyway, the, the motion that was put forward was to support it at 25% cap at $100,000. So significantly less than the 508 that had previously been proposed. And there was an amendment to increase it to 300 something. But in the end, the council said it all settled on the 25% cap at $100,000. There, there was some discussion about codifying the amount that we contribute to SADs and development agreements, because it's, it's kind of been subjective in the past. I know 25% has kind of been a common number that's been used, but I don't believe it's necessarily been locked in it over time. It's, it's tended to fluctuate depending on the will of the council. So just a lot of discussion on that and then some heartache from people that are up there trying to get this. And understandably so, it's a very expensive barrier for their business development. And that's really all I have to present on for the last two meetings. I'd be happy to stand for any questions from the commission.
Typically 25%. We have the typical, but then the agreement with them.
Correct. So 25% I think has been what we've recently done with, with some of the newer SADs and development agreements. I think the reason that we settled on the 62.5 is they were originally advocating for 75, because I believe there's precedent where the council might have done 50 or 75% increments and then projects way back when. And I, I think the justification there was that this was more of a small business and could more justified to support small business versus something like Walgreens coming in and just giving them the 25% where they have the capital to support large developments like what they did down in that district. So I, I, I don't think there was opposition to the council, opposition to the council necessarily. It's supporting a higher level for the small businesses. There's more of a unfortunate reality that we have limited funding and we can't just spend it for every one of these. We have to consider how this affects rate payers out of the city, because the reality is that we, we don't use property tax revenue. We don't sales tax revenue to support the utility fund that's solely funded by rate payers. So when we deplete that fund and then we have, you know, an $800,000 outflow repair and then a two or $2 million repair for, $2 million upgrade for our wealth facilities and we deplete that fund, our city rates go up and it's residents that pay that. Just something we have to be considerate of. It's tough decisions, unfortunately.
I know that there are still. Do, do you know what the plan or the utility plan, I don't even but for extending water and sewer to the rest of city residences, residents? When I asked before, I think the answer I got was that we don't, unless residents pay for it.
That is my understanding is at this point in time, I, I don't believe there's any proactive effort from the city administration level to go out and build out the infrastructure where there is not. However, as we have new developments come in or, or property owners that want to do that, I think the two mechanisms that we have in place are again, the special assessment district or the development agreement. And John, you're much more knowledgeable on this than I am. Maybe you can speak to that.
I would just add that, yeah, neither our water or our sewer plans call for expansion of city infrastructure to other parts of the city. And as Jordan said, it typically happens through request from someone developing a, a new property that needs to have it and that is willing to pay all or part of it. But otherwise, our plans don't call for it. It's something that I would prefer to see in the future that we coordinate our, our comp plan, our land use plans with our utility and sewer plans or and sewer and water plans so that we identify those appropriate places. So if we do, funding does become available if cap, you know, if capital is out there and we can access it. We have some ability to provide direction as to where we want to see that occur.
It just seems like, I mean, it's a pretty blatant. Whoever has the money to do it can, but whoever doesn't can. Seems like a pretty big equity issue for, for folks.
We'll see that it's also a it, it, it's a very, it's very expensive to do this. And so where it pencils out is where we have density, where we have a number of rate payers to help share that cost. And so extending sewer and water to areas that are low density, one acre lots and such, you know, like a estra readout. If that were to occur, the rates would likely go up for all rate payers because of the expense that would be involved in putting that pipe down, down readout. So it's, it's has, it's something that definitely needs to be thought about and planned, you know, and identified. Where, where are those red places or where is there environmental risk or where are there poor soils and?
Yeah, yeah. Where are people likely to have water contamination because they're habits, you know? They're septic and they're well too close or whatever. Off the cuff, are there? I mean, I can think of some parts of town that I, that I would think would fall within this, but like high density areas of the city that don't have water sewer that were.
There's, there's a few, but most of the, most of the high density part of Soldatna is fairly well served. There is, yeah, the, along the river, off of Mary Dale and Readout.
Yeah, I know, like my parents have this like really, really scary old septic thing. It's just like it's deeper and deeper, this like giant sinking thing. And it's like literally right next to the river. I'm like, this is. But sorry, yeah, throwing them under the bus.
Oh, I believe, I can't remember. The water line goes to the end of the road. The sewer line stops just around the corner on Daisy.
And just because it's served by water and sewer doesn't mean that people have to use it, right?
If if they had an existing septic and well and it's functioning, they can continue to use it. But at the point of failure, they have to again.
Yeah, I guess looking at that map, Ridgeway. Or no, that's beyond our city limit, right? Okay.
And generally speaking, Soldatna has got really decent soils for septic systems. There's a lot of very sandy gravelly soil, so it works out well. But there are exceptions like Whistle Hill and across the street from Whistle Hill, Acapulco, the soils there are terrible. The septic at the Acapulco failed last year in the middle of summer. And so there are these pockets and, you know, like we talked about, it would be good to identify those kinds of situations, those kinds of conditions so that we can provide services when, when they become avail or when we have the ability to do that.
And that would be basically 2030, when we, when we throw out our envision Soldatna 2030 and write envision Soldatna 2060?
We're due for a, a comp plan. We're due for it. And hopefully within the next month or so, we should be finding out about annexation. And that too, if it, something happens there, that would further the, the need for a revised plan.
Does anyone else have any questions for Jordan? Commissioner, yeah, sorry. Councilmember, we're pretty informal. Casual group. Yeah. Very intelligent, very casual. We like to. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jordan. We have John, Director Economic Development Planning Report.
Thank you. I, I only have two things. And one is I've mentioned the idea of a project manager for the riverfront redevelopment. And so one of our goals is to take an ordinance to council at their next meeting, asking for an appropriation of funds to fund that position. So that, that'll be introduced at the next meeting. And then as Jordan mentioned with regard to Whistle Hill, there'll be an agenda item there. It'll be a resolution to actually increase the funding for the special assessment district. And that's required by code. And the direction that was received from council, as Jordan mentioned, is to shift from a SAD to a development agreement. But first, yeah, we have to put the, the SAD to bed. So this resolution will be introduced and then our anticipation is that it will fail based on, you know, what council did at the last meeting. With the SAD off the table, then a development agreement can be brought forward and be approved by council. And provided we get feedback from the, the curls in time, we will have that on the agenda as well for the council to consider. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Associate Planner Hester, do you have a report? Thank you. Moving on to commissioner comments, maybe we'll start with Charlene and go.
I'm just to thank John and Jen for all their hard work this past year. Thanks. Oh, and this book's awesome. Thank you.
I echo that. Thank you for all your hard work. I do have one question. I'm not sure if it's appropriate for this meeting, but I'll ask anyways. It's in relation to the tenants in the RV park by the river. I'm just curious to know if there are any updates. I don't think that's the city's responsibility, but I was just curious if there is any word, any progress or anything on that.
I was, or we were informed that a settle, there is some type of settlement was there's an agreement on, on some form of settlement between the owners and the tenants. And that the process is still moving forward as designed, you know, on that same timeline. But I don't know any of the details. It's not the agreement that was or settlement that was created is not public. And so I don't have any details to provide you other than to say they resolved some of their issues and are moving forward.
So there's no way to know if they are going to be displaced in July or not?
The, they will, the right, the the original eviction notice has folks moving out by sometime in May. I don't remember the exact date. That has not changed. So they will still have to leave the mobile home park by that time. But some other agreement was worked out to satisfy folks. Yeah, perhaps. Right. I don't know. Yeah. What it was or, but something was agreed upon.
Housing Task Force. I think that's what Dennis asked for last, last meeting. Maybe we can look at that next year for the accomplishments.
So it's gonna take a minute. Last meeting was lot. It was the conclusion of the fire department and everything. And I just kind of had like a month to like think about it and rehash how it all went down and whatnot. And I just, I wanted to touch on a couple of things in hindsight. During that meeting, there was a couple, I believe, borough members, Cap, is he on the borough? And then Cox, Tyler Cox, is he a councilman member?
CES, the president of the CES board.
Okay.
Just commenting as this individual, I don't think he was, I mean, he is a
Correct.
Borough Assembly. Okay. But yeah, and then I just with the way that went down, I felt at the time that this body was being told kind of what to put their blinders on to and just focus on this one thing. And I felt like between the two meetings, January and February, that we were giving our opinions and our concerns on everything. And it's part of, I guess, our duties and responsibilities to do that. And I just kind of wanted to actually read and like, I guess, review real quick. Our Soldatna Code of Ordinances 17.05.010, Planning and Zoning Commission. I don't know if Jen's able to pull that up or not. Yeah, 17.05.010. And then part B is duties and responsibilities. And I just thought it was a good time when, when that kind of stuff happens. And maybe just remind everybody on here that we are, we, we are important. And there's a shall in here, which means you have to do it. You don't have a choice. On this, it says, Commissioner shall have the following duties and responsibilities. Number one, develop, alter, or revise and propose a comprehensive plan for the physical development of the city. Such plan with accompanying maps, charts, and descriptive materials shall show the commission's recommendation to the council for the development of the city. Number two, make a recommendation to the council on the development, location, and sequence of all public improvements, including the relocation, removal, extension, or change of use of existing or future public properties, buildings, ways, grounds, or spaces. I felt like that one kind of applied to what we were doing. Number three, act as an advisory commission for Kenai Peninsula Borough Planning Commission on all planning matters as provided for by the Kenai Peninsula Borough Code of Ordinances. I felt like that one was also what we were doing. We were giving our advice. Perform such duty. Number four, perform such duties and exercises such powers as may be delegated to the commission by the Soldatna Municipal Code and the Kenai Peninsula Borough Code of Ordinances. Number five, make and develop plans for the replanning, improving, and redevelopment of any area within the city which may be destroyed in the hole or part of damage by fire, earthquake, or other disaster. Hopefully we don't have to worry about that one anytime soon. Number six, make investigations. This is kind of one that, reading it for myself, I just, I kind of triggered like, I should do this more often from, for myself, is make investigations and then offer recommendations regarding any matter related to the planning of future developments of the city. And make studies, surveys, maps, and other plans relating to any element of comprehensive planning, including land use, transportation, recreation, housing, economic development, public and community facilities, and recommended actions to the city council, which I feel that was also a major part of that. The rezoning of that area. And then the second one, one was the actual putting that building there, which was a public and a community, uh, community facility. And then that's the end of that. But I just, reading it for myself, I just thought that maybe everybody needed to, to read it and just remind of what our duties and responsibilities truly are. And anybody can say anything they want to you, but it's on you to go read the black and white yourself. And if you don't like it, change the code. So that's pretty much it. But yeah, I just thought that was important. And yeah, a lot of stuff done last year. So congrats to both of you guys. That's a lot, especially with the short term rentals that spiked up a lot of extra work that wasn't there in the past. So nice job.
That's a good reminder. This body is important. Your role as a commissioner is a serious one. We try to keep a light and friendly environment, but we do make really important decisions and it's good to come prepared. If you think that something isn't in the best interest of the city, you know, you can come to Jen or John or anyone beforehand and, and see if there's ways that you as a commissioner can make recommendations to, to change things during the meeting. and and see if there's ways that you as a commissioner can make recommendations to to change things during the meeting. It's okay to postpone meetings so that you have more time to to make changes. And I think, yeah, that's a good reminder. Thank you. I should have just saved that for mine.
That's right. No, I appreciate you bringing that up, Tom. So I I felt similarly in the. We're doing, you know, are we holding things up and this, we shouldn't be doing this is what we, it sort of felt like a little bit of bullying. And then, but I really appreciated what you said at the end of the meeting too, where you took the time to say, hey, we've been working on a lot of things here and this, it, some of this doesn't really align with what, all the things we've been talking about. And so we want to take the time in consideration and I appreciated that. So. And we are basically volunteers, you know, and we're not planners. And so we're kind, I always feel like I'm learning as I go and kind of getting caught off guard. Some things come up and suddenly we're supposed to make a decision on them and it doesn't feel right, but we don't really know what to do about it. Anyway, I appreciate it. I'm glad that we're all learning together and glad that some of you are a lot smarter than me.
All have different intelligences. Takes a, takes a team of differently talented people to. Yeah, more brains are better than one, I think. And that's, I I did want to, that sparked something for me. Informational items are often some is my favorite section. I feel like we get a lot of, a lot of good knowledge in that section. And I'm wondering, there have been two instances where I really wanted an issue to have come before this body a year or two before it it actually got to our, so the firehouse was one. And then actually the parking, the the parking lot for the fieldhouse, for the fieldhouse, yeah. Both of those instances felt like we had to, as a body, approve them. Because it was at a point in that project's evolution that there were no alternatives. And if this body had seen those issues a year or two beforehand, so that there were many, there were many other places that we as citizens could have gone. I think the Borough Assembly and CES had some public meetings, you know, we could have. And certainly, those are opportunities. But when for for instances of of when things are going to make a big impact or a big change in the relocation, removal, extension, or change of use of public properties, a big, a big change of rezoning, commercial property to institutional property right in our downtown core area, that type of, those types of issues, I would love to see as informational items sooner. So that more brains can add thoughts or 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 public input to really critical upcoming changes. So maybe it's an additional section of coming down the pipe. You know, officially, we don't need to, your your opinion isn't isn't needed, but if you do have thoughts, you know, go here, go comment here. Or if you do have thoughts about this parking lot, we're gonna have to have a parking lot at the fieldhouse. This is the thing that we're doing in house. What should it look like? I think that, I think that it seemed like at the time that CEO, who is a wonderful staff member, needed, needed that to be approved yesterday. And really wasn't able to hear any of the suggestions or comments that a lot of, a lot of commissioners had. And I think when that happens over and over and over again, the potential harm is that that commissioners are like, well, what am I? You know, if if there isn't room to to incorporate commissioner comments or feedback on projects because they are seen too late to actually make any changes, that feels like a flaw in in the process. Or or that there is something simple that we could do, which is to have stuff, stuff coming up and that you're gonna see that this is really important. And if we want to make any changes, now is the time, not when you're gonna see it in, you know, a couple of years. So I don't know how that happens. I think that's. But it it just. Couple, couple instances recently that really were. So on on that note, maybe, I know, I don't know, I think at one of our, one of our meetings in the last couple of years, we we sort of took a poll from commissioners about work session topics that they would like to see coming up. And of course, we brainstormed, you know, twenty, but then we were able to vote as a commission about which ones we should prioritize. And so I don't know if we have time to do that this meeting. Perhaps we could do that at the next meeting. But I I have heard several commissioners mention that they would love to have a housing task force. Multiple small business owners have repeatedly asked me to look at relaxing the parking requirements. There's independently owned business support mechanisms. I don't know how to say that simpler, but what can we as a city do to make it possible for independently owned businesses to thrive or even just survive in the city? Because they don't have as much capital in their back pocket as larger corporate entities. And we want to mix. We want, you know, the flavor of locally owned businesses to be alive and well in Soldatna. The sign code changes, you know, that could be a continued discussion. And then, and then the the other thing that's been on hold is the downtown core district allowable uses that we approved. And then it's kind of just been kind of waiting. And then now we have this fabulous thing, but I do think that how how to incorporate that in appendix E for the code, code changes would be something that I'd. And the fence, you know, there's just no end to fabulous discussions that we can have, but it is important. And and I only throw those topic areas out there not to say like, we want you to do more work, more work, more work. But there's, there's just a lot of important things that the code does. And and we, it is a living language body. We have to keep making better and better for the residents of the city. Oh, it's important work. It's good work. Thank you for all the work, all of you and staff especially. I think that's the end of our meeting. We're adjourned. The next meeting will be on April third at five thirty here in the City Council chambers. Thanks for coming, everybody.